2017-02 Marie Gasparo, 18th Park Avenue. Then 2017-03 George Gomes, 156 West Clinton Avenue. And the next will be 2016-39 Lindbach, 6th Palace Road. And then, is that it? I think that's it.
That will be it.
No.
Is there one? I have them as...
Oh, that's the way.
Yes. It'll be the third item.
It's two way. Oh, I missed that.
Yes. So I think we're...
We've done all the items covered.
Okay.
And I see Sarah's not here.
At least somebody did.
Is everybody up to date on their taxes?
Yes. I'm glad you're all right.
I'm sorry, I have not had a chance to look at either January, February. Have either of you?
I have seen both.
Okay. All right, maybe we'll try. I'll try and get to them for the next meeting. Tell Sarah.
Okay.
Okay, so let's begin with the first item is 2016-30 Evan and Allison Barth, 11 Beechwood Road. Take the microphone and state your name.
Good evening. Stephen Besevan, the architect for Mr. and Mrs. Barth, 11 Beechwood Road. Thank you first of all for hearing me first, I appreciate it. So we were here last year in November to apply for site plan approval for the reconstruction and in addition to an existing wood deck in the rear of the house, as well as the addition of a proposed patio at grade and the rear of the house as well adjacent to the deck. The coverage variance was required from the zoning board. We appeared there last month for 260 square feet of coverage, 8 percent. We were granted that variance unanimously. Excuse me?
Did you get out?
No, I didn't think this was working.
And we're back in front of your board to receive approval for the site plan. We did receive comments back in November from Han's office. We addressed those comments. There was an existing conditions plan, several notes, drainage notes, an amendment to the zoning table. I believe all those have been addressed and I saw the comment that came out from his office stating that they were met to satisfaction.
Okay. And I think that the... You know what I was seeing was, we have an objection to the previous site plan. I think the hand digging of the pier that will be within the drip line of that tree that's next to the proposed deck.
That's true. And absolutely, it was the intention, it wasn't written, but absolutely if it's in the condition of the approval, it's agreed upon.
Okay. And then was there one other item, the Evergreens?
Yeah, the ZBA granted the variance on the basis of a recommendation, I think that you would have made, to plant a row of shrubs at the west side of the patio. Were you the one at the ZBA meeting, Steve?
I was at the ZBA meeting. We had this shown... I have that upside down. I have that upside down. I'm so sorry. I don't want this upside down. But yeah, we had this shown on the plan. And I'm sorry that that didn't make it to the plan, but you're right. They made the planning board application site plan. Can that be a condition of the resolution of the planning board as well?
So you'll approve this subject to the Evergreens and to the hand digging comment, if that's not on the plan yet?
It's not on the plan, you're right. And sorry, that didn't make it on.
All right, so subject to those two conditions. Any other comments or any board members? Any comments from anyone in the public? Okay. Then Marion, you have a resolution?
In November 2016 Evan and Allison Barth applied for site development plan approval to replace a deck at the rear of their house at 11 Beechwood Road with a larger deck and to add a patio adjacent to the proposed deck. The improvements would exceed the permitted coverage and therefore require a variance from the zoning board of appeals. On January 24th, 2017, the ZBA granted the variance based on the applicant's commitment at the hearing to plant a row of shrubs at the west side of the proposed patio with screening. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memorandum dated November 1st listed a number of issues which were addressed in the subsequent submission which Han found satisfactory. Whereas the revised submission did not show the row of plants discussed with the ZBA. Lucille Muntz, the village's landscape consultant, reviewed the plans and recommended that the applicant hand dig the deck footing within the drip line of the tree. The planning board held a public hearing in November and tonight. It's type 2 action under secret. Therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled proposed patio in addition to the deck, subject to (1) digging the deck footing within the drip line of the tree by hand and (2) submitting a plan showing a row of shrubs at the west side of the patio which must be approved by Lucille Muntz.
Any comments from the board members?
No.
I can have a motion to approve the resolution. Second?
Second.
Any further comments? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And thanks for accommodating us, Steve.
22nd Stephen, you gave a copy.
Please just take the microphone and identify yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Christopher Carthy from Pools of Perfection and thank you again for the accommodation for the scheduling tonight as well. So as you may recall from my last time here, the Friedman's purchases home with an existing pool and existing patios. The existing patios exceed their permitted gross land coverage. And what happened is, they were previously poured concrete patios. We replaced them with bluestone. And in the process, we were told that we discovered that the application was never filed for these patios in their entirety and we are now in the process of legalizing the patios. So what I've done is I've gone ahead and did an analysis of all the notice neighbors to find out where they are in comparison to this home in terms of gross land coverage. And I am not utterly relieved to tell you that they are at the top of the list, but they're not at the top of the list. They're the penultimate. So it at least leaves the planning board in the position of not establishing precedent amongst the existing neighbors whom I notified. The neighbors have a gross land coverage, and these reports were taken from the Town of Greenberg property cards. The gross land coverages, if we were to use the proposed, is somewhere around 143 percent, whereas the... Of the notice neighbors, the maximum was 154 percent. And again, those are just taken from the Town of Greenberg property cards and the property... Copies of those property cards were included in your packets. So as you can see, the house is here. The pool is here. There really is no space for pervious surface between the house and the pool. You know, you come down, it's kind of awkward to put pervious surface between the house and the pool. So, and they have a very narrow, almost nominal walkway around the pool in the back. So I think they're really stuck as to how to work their way out of this gross land coverage problem. And I think the only thing to do now, I would ask you to send me to the ZBA and let the ZBA at least adjudicate the gross land coverage variance. And then I would come back to you. There are comments from the engineer, some of which, you know, we hope we've addressed. There are some that I don't quite understand that I could speak to the engineer about. But regardless, those comments aren't even relevant in the fact that if I don't get my variance, some of the drainage comments, et cetera, those things, minutiae, wouldn't even come into play because I wouldn't have a variance. So again, I think in summation, I'm looking for a referral to the ZBA at this point.
Any comments from any board members?
Who is it? Good question. I knew the answer and I kind of forget. I would guess, I would guess about 20 years ago, 20 or 30 years ago.
I have an aerial photo from 2000, the pool was shown in 2000.
Yeah, and that's well before that idea.
It's either around the 1980s.
Something like that, yeah.
I forgot exactly where. If you have apartment four and it's on file.
Correct. It is on file. And the file, the town of, the Village of Irvington's file does show the pool, doesn't show patios. And yet the assessor's card does show patios. The assessor was good enough to pick it up, but that's it.
Any comments?
No, perhaps one or two.
I think, just, you know, I pulled out the schedule that you showed, you know, of the various lot sizes and lot coverages. And right, there's only one lot that is higher than your proposed coverage.
Correct.
286 Riverview Road, which I think is across the street from the subject property.
Right.
Everybody else is either, was definitely considerably below your lot coverage and many of them are below 100 percent of your lot coverage.
Agreed. Can't dispute that.
And I would just think, you know, my concern is though, that the village adopted regulations in terms of coverage for a reason, you know, to limit runoff and to limit the potential for flooding. And I think here in this situation, again, where you're at 143 percent, oh, let's back up, 43 percent over the maximum coverage, while you're providing stormwater management for the added, the added coverage, I think maybe in this situation, again, because you're looking for a variance, it might be helpful and I think it would be appropriate to consider how can you pick up some additional coverage off of the site and retain it on-site? Not coverage, I'm sorry, runoff from the site.
I agree with that. I think we've addressed that in the sense that we have, we are addressing, is E... And I mean, I appreciate your point, which is suggesting to me is that I look at the whole gross land coverage and make sure that my infiltration, my infiltrators, et cetera, are sized to pick up the entire lot, not just the improvement.
I would necessarily, I'm not asking you to pick up the entire lot, but if you could pick up more than just the additional 43 percent, I think that's reasonable. I think that in looking at the aerial photo, there's a large backyard here where I think possibly some, maybe some of the downspouts from the house could be relocated or redirected to the back of the house.
I'm amenable to that. I'm amenable to that because, you know, I certainly agree that, you know, one hand washes the other, which is, you know, if we're going to go and ask for a variance, we'll say, "Look, we'll improve the whole lot at the same time. We'll improve the drainage on the whole lot at the same time." So I'm amenable to that.
Okay. Great. Any other comments from anyone in the audience? Well, I think in that regard, that, we okay with referring this to the ZBA? I think so. And then come back with a revised site plan showing. And I think I will notify the chairman of the ZBA as our discussion here this evening with regard to the runoff. And then I think you can go to the ZBA and come back here with the revised site plan there.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Next item is 2016-31 Papa Panau and Lawler, 20 Lewis Road. And I'm recused on this matter, so she and I will chair the board on this matter.
Good evening. Pat Steinster, Gotham Design and Community Development, here for Dr. Papa Panau and his wife, who would like to put the pool in the backyard. Since the last time we were here, we reduced the site coverage. We eliminated the terrace. We are now at 18.5 percent over the permitted, just basically the pool. We also shifted the pool slightly on the site to the south, which got it further from the canopies of the large trees up in the corner. And I think we're down to, there being three questions remaining that need to be addressed and we want to knock those off. One of them is the issue with the driveway. We had kept the idea of having, either coming in off of the driveway of the neighbor's property or coming off of Mr. or Dr. Papa Panau's driveway. At this point, we're just going to keep it on-site. We're not going to use the neighbor's driveway. We're going to eliminate that and have that be the access point on the site. So that should clarify that point and I think it simplifies the matter because we're not needing to coordinate things with the neighbor to make that work. We also, I know there was concern about the fence. We had brought the pool fence around and we were coming all the way down here, which made the front yard as part of, you know, a kid playing in the front yard could get around the house, his parents aren't watching him, it could be an issue. So what we're going to do is we're going to modify the pool, the fence, if this works for you, to bring that up so that it kind of hits that side of the house, so only the backyard is accessible as part of the pool. So it greatly reduces the site area. The third thing is, I did see Lucille's comments. We did add some landscaping to the site. We showed where new materials were going to be planted, but we didn't identify exactly what the size and the specific types of each one. So we will, you know, do that, you know, when we come to the next meeting. What we'd like to do at this point is get to the ZBA because as the previous speaker said, if we can't get the variance, the plans that matter. So if we can get going with that, it'd be great.
So Patty, you'll show the new fence, the type of fence on the new plan?
Right. It's the same detail fence that we've got on our plans already, but what we'll do is we'll bring it here so it hits the side of the house, so it'll be clear.
And you worked out the back, Regina?
Um, yes. She, we had a good sidewalk and she started, I wasn't trying to be cute about it, but she said, "Well, how would I take this fence out without damaging things?" And I said, "Well, if you leave the fence, you don't damage any of the plantings." So she decided, because she cares about the plantings, she'll leave that fence, that fence will be, you know, usable for Dr. Papa Panau and then she will put a new fence in so that she's compliant with the code.
Okay. Okay. Does that work, right?
George? Anyone in the audience?
We go to ZBA. See what happens next.
Well, I think it's going to help that we're down to there. Dr. Papa Panau, he's here. This is his first meeting. It's guilty when it probably he may have been out of his comfort.
It's a good one. Yeah.
The next item is 2016-19 Jaclyn Leonardo and Andres Sorelnik, 17 Matheson Park.
John Malone, Ferguson Malone, Architect. Sure, I was adding Jackie and Andres Sorelnik. So we had a few open items. This is a revision to an approved site plan approval. We've been back to the ZBA. I got the last meeting, I think we picked up the missing civil stuff that we have. I don't know if there's any other questions.
Any board members have any questions, comments?
Just to help me clarify, this is all about that shed, right?
No, 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 that was, that wasn't what was changed. The, there was an area that was an open porch.
Ah, okay, 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 yeah.
Basically, the variance of the substantial coverage has been revised, taking into account the building.
Because I was going sort of ballistic that you had to do this for a shed.
No, 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 that.
Add this like, okay, so that's, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from anyone in the public? No, I think that on this matter, we can, we have a resolution. Do I have a resolution?
On August 3rd, 2016, the planning board issued site development plan approval to Jaclyn Leonardo and Andres Sorelnik to construct a two-story addition to their house, reconstruct an existing shed and add to an existing patio and porch at 17 Matheson Park. The zoning board of appeals granted variances for coverage and enclosures into the side yard setback. In January 2017, the applicants applied to the planning board for revised development, site development plan approval to incorporate exterior porch areas into the proposed addition. The revised site plan required new variances, which the ZBA granted on February 21st, 2017, subject to maintaining screening between applicant's house and the property to the west. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memorandum dated January 27th, listed several issues, all of which were addressed in the subsequent submission. The planning board held a public hearing on the application on February 1st and March 1st. The actions of type 2 action under secret, resolved that the planning board grants the application for revised site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Sorelnik Resonance Prepared by Ferguson Malone Architecture. They're specified, subject to maintaining screening between the applicant's house and the property to the west as required by the ZBA.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution? Second? All in favor? Aye. Our next matter is 2016-27 William and Regina Fitzpatrick, 130 Main Street. Get a bigger board, Bob.
Okay.
Get a bigger board.
Bob Riley, Architect, Irvington. Couple of comments that I know were, Doug wanted a letter from our neighbors because the two trees that were going to be taken down are on the common property and I had that letter.
I think we received a copy of that letter. Just a couple of comments on that, Bob. I think what we're going to need, I mean, we're considering, we'll consider, you know, approving the site plan title subject to, but what we need is a letter on the letterhead of the property owner next door.
Sure.
Okay. And obviously saying that the property owner is the property owner of that parcel and is okay with removal of the trees and then have that notarized. The signature has to be notarized.
We can do that.
Okay. And was there any other comments on that? And Doug, some engineering issues, Doug?
Yeah, engineering, we need the park test and deep test. I know that it's performed, but I just haven't seen it yet.
So probably this coming week or this week, it'll be performed.
Okay.
I wasn't here when it was reviewed last, but I looked at it this time. Can you, I mean, did you guys go through the cantilever that he has?
Yes. Yes.
And you were all...
Crazy with it.
Not thrilled about it.
No, but I think we, also I think maybe he has to still have to go back to the ARB for some issues.
Just sort of one of those things that this is a pretty prominent thing. And I was like, I don't know of a structure that's like that. And so I was kind of curious if there's other ways that you could...
We have the tightest programs you could imagine. You want to look at it?
Yeah, I just briefly looked at it and said, "Boy, you know, you're leaning all the way to the right," you know.
Oh, it's just a three-foot overhang.
Yeah, I just don't know of another structure in any town like this that's like that. Perhaps you do, but I don't.
Well, I can, maybe not like that, but a classic split level house, the living room up on top will come out two feet. Now, that was done in the 40s, but...
Yeah, I just don't know how that, it's a sort of a character thing that, so I wasn't sure if this was brought up before.
No, it wasn't, I think also there were some comments about the roof material that was being used too as part of this, that it was a standing seam roof and really as an historic, as a building that's part of the historic district, whether that really was in keeping and consistent with what was on the building originally as part of the original construction, coming back in time. And I think again, I think we were willing to let this go on to the ARB and the ARB may have comments with regard to the overhang and also with regard to the, particularly with regard to the roof too and the appearance of the building to make sure that it's consistent with the rest of the buildings in the district, inconsistent with what was originally the intent of that building and the architectural style of that building. How do you feel about that, George? I'm sup to you.
Yeah, no, I just, I don't know where the line is. So to me, the line is, for me, is no, I really don't think it's terribly appropriate for Main Street to have something like that, especially something so visible. And that's why I was looking...
Have you seen my model?
No, I haven't seen a model.
The roof you're, the overhang you're talking about is six feet between the neighbor?
Yeah, I looked at it on your elevations and that's what got me, so...
Could we look at it now?
Do you have it there, Bob? On the presentation board?
You've seen this?
Sure.
Okay, now let me...
I've seen, I've seen, this is what clued me into this, is this elevation's right here.
I'm sorry?
This is what clued me into this, is your elevation's right here.
Yes.
So I just had never, ever seen a elevation like that, your north elevation.
This elevation.
I've never seen anything like it. And it wouldn't necessarily, to me, this is, you have another property adjacent to it, as your photograph showed, that isn't in a very similar style. And then you're interjecting that along the whole facade back there. And that's what got me was like, I don't, I don't see how this is either working to complement what's there or to be that different than...
Let me bring you, well...
Bob, please use the microphone.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you. The comment with the architecture review board, the last comment is that there was a flat roof here. So their concern wasn't the overhang, it was, they didn't like this, so it was, I had intended to put a gable end here all along. That's the only comment that we had from the ARB. I think it was a comment here about, in the initial stages of coming, we had this further out, we had one going in that direction. And that, the minute we discussed how we were going to highlight the existing, we got rid of all of that. We narrowed down the program and it's about as tight as I can get. But I, actually, the architect on the board liked the dissimilar character to the new versus the old. He actually liked that. He liked the bigger windows here rather than, said, "The last thing I would want to do is to try and imitate as if this..."
Absolutely not asking you to do that, no question.
Okay.
But if you're going to, in my opinion, if you're going to do something like this, then do something that in essence can stand on its own. Because for me, I looked at that and visualized how that's going to look and I'm like, "Well, what is that?" You know, what is that? It's not complimenting or being enough of a difference to then make it so that you're...
Let's review this for a minute. There's the main face. That's the face that the architecture review board has the, that's their real call as to what is the character of the main? The law doesn't talk about all the other three faces. It talks about the street, the elevation facing the Main Street.
This is actually not accurate. That's only true for the demolition part, not for, not for their regular review. At this, at this point, the ARB did look at it to see whether they would approve the demolition, which would be the change in the front. And you're right, for that part of the law, that's all that's relevant. But, but when they, and they do have to go back to the ARB. And at that point, the ARB would look at the whole building.
All right, so perhaps...
And it being on the National Register, then you should be following those standards. And I would hope that the ARB would be looking at those standards when they review this. I think that, I agree, I think the overhang just doesn't look right. It just looks odd.
I don't know where, where do you get that opinion? When, what gives you the, why would you think...
I'm looking at the context of when that building was constructed, the architectural style of that building when it was constructed.
Stop for a minute. You realize it was constructed, that was the, that was the original building?
Correct.
Well...
And your addition, your addition, in addition to one...
What about the guy next to it? What about that guy?
It's one thing to add an addition, Bob, but that's another thing to have something hanging out in space that just looks peculiar compared to a building that was constructed in the early 20th century.
On your, your, how do you describe and what's your defense for that addition?
See, that's how, if you remember how I started this, is I asked, you know, can you cite some other examples of something that's like this?
I'm not sure, to me, that's not relevant. The answer is the framework.
This isn't a beauty contest, okay? This isn't my opinion versus your opinion. This is an opinion about how does this either, you think that this fits in, but you're hearing it from me that it doesn't. You're hearing it from others, what I hear is that...
Have you looked at the month, but you haven't? Have you looked at it in relationship to the neighboring house here?
Yeah.
That's 12 feet away from that elevation?
Yeah. Yes.
And that still disturbs you?
Yeah, because it's...
So give me a suggestion, how would you deal with it?
I would, I would pull the overhang off. I would take the overhang off and leave the addition.
So I should have a nine-foot by six bedroom?
You're the architect, you could, you could have to take a look at what are the other design alternatives on that property? How can you do something in a different angle, going towards the back of the house? I'm not an architect, okay? But I'm a planner. And what I see there though is it doesn't make sense in terms of the historic district.
Have you looked at the neighboring building?
Yes. That, that, that building is from the same era as the building that you...
How many generations of additions do you think there are on that?
But, but again, they don't look out of character.
There's no character to it. It's, it's eight different additions.
Okay, look, I think these are arguments to be taken up with, at the ARB. Okay. So we have a, we have a proposal here for a site plan. Mary Ann, you have a, you have a resolution for this, I understand, but...
Yeah, I just want to go back and say, I'm not necessarily against having an addition to this, to this house at all, okay? I just happen to kind of object to the way it's been done to date. And that I think there are ways that one could do this with the same program, with what you're doing, that will either stand out in a stronger way or fit in, in a, in a better way. But just having this asymmetrical lift on the side, to me, is going to look like a mistake. And the reason I say that is, it sort of reminded me of, okay, I don't have a reason for this other than I need this square footage. So all I'm asking to do is to figure out another way, either you shift it, you, you work it on both, or you give a fireplace on the other side that that can get incorporated into that as a, as a overhang that then becomes something below it. Just something so that when I walk by, I don't realize, oh, well, we said that's okay because they need a certain-sized bedroom upstairs and they don't need it downstairs. It just doesn't...
What if I had downstairs?
To me, that would be better. You know, you, you ask a question, I answer, yes.
I'm asking.
But you see now, you know, this gets back to, it is just about, on the second floor, you need this kind of room.
No, no, I, I've never had a problem with that, me personally, when the design of this building.
Okay.
Now, if it were on the other side where it was, where it's much more visible, then it would have to blend into the framework. But that side is 12 feet away from the neighbor, and he covers that elevation. You're never going, unless you walk up on his property, you're never going to look at that elevation.
I sort of disagree.
Except you're going to look at the three-foot overhang.
Your photographs sort of tell something different, too. So I think...
Okay.
I understand what you're pointing, you're saying it's set back, that the addition is set back from Main Street, but still, when you look at the house from Main Street, you're going to see this overhang that just doesn't, it looks awkward. It just doesn't look like it.
I mean, I can't, what can I say about that? That's like, you, you can object to the fact that the, the new addition doesn't look like a replica of the old. You could have that opinion. I don't think, does anybody have a copy of the, of the regulations? Because the architecture review board had no guidelines. In fact, we were operating under a demolition. Now, can you imagine that?
That's a demolition, Bob, but as I said, there are standards for the, of the Secretary of the Interior of the US Government that says that these are the standards to follow in rehabbing...
They were sitting here the whole time, we had four meetings with them.
I'm trying not to interrupt you, I appreciate that you don't interrupt me.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
There are standards that are set by the Secretary of the Interior for rehabbing historic buildings. This is a contributing element to the historic district of the Main Street area. Therefore, it should be done following those standards. And as I said, I would hope that you, as the architect for the applicant, and then the ARB would, would review those standards and make sure that they are being applied and can come up with a rationale for what they are doing and what you are doing on site.
Okay. Obviously, we did that with the architecture review board.
Well, I don't know if you have them, because you haven't, you haven't got, you got the approval for the demolition from the ARB, not for, not for the design.
Essentially, that, that changes can be made to the front of the building.
Why did we have four meetings then with them?
I...
I'm sorry.
Let's move it along.
Okay.
I think we're at a point, you know, there is a resolution. All right, you have a resolution, Mary Ann, for, for this, for the point, but I mean, it's up to the board members here if you, if you feel that it's appropriate to, to entertain a resolution for the approval of the site plan at this point and refer, then he still has to go back to the ARB for approval.
I think that we should look at another plan before it goes back to the ARB. And we, otherwise, you're just going to have, you're going to keep going back and forth.
We've already been doing that.
We've been...
This is going on six months. This is crazy. This is, in my opinion...
Bill, I apologize, but when you speak, you have to speak it all.
So can I ask a question? Did you, you went to the, the architectural review board with exactly this?
Yes.
And they have blessed this. Is that correct?
Yes.
Not just the demo?
No, no.
Oh, so that, see, that's the point.
No, that's not the point.
Well, they have it. And I may, I may have the minutes here from the meeting.
They actually had a statement or a resolution.
Yeah, I, I, I actually, I got the ARB decision over the, off the, out of the minutes today.
Yeah, the ARB chairman is here. Mr. Rizzulo, do you wish to speak at all on this matter? To bring any information to, to what we're discussing here at this point?
Sure. Rick Rizzulo, Chairman of the ARB. We did have several meetings, I don't remember if there was four, but it was at least three, most of which were to discuss the demolition aspect of what was in front of us. The application was for demolition. Unfortunately, with that whole statute being brand-new, we weren't sure how to apply it. In the meantime, we did make several, you know, several looks at the, at the building itself, made some comments, but knowing full well that the, the whole application's going to have to come back to us anyway, and we would look at the, the overall design at that time. So yes, there were some conversations about the building as it was, and there were different things that we looked at and, you know, said were okay and then that weren't. But the overall decision is not going to happen until it comes back to us.
Well, why don't I read you the...
The resolution.
...paragraph from the...
Thank you, Rick.
From this decision, okay. After the discussion, a motion was made to approve the application for demolition under Section 224-199 of the zoning code. Essentially, all it says is you can change the front of the building. Mr. Rizzulo and Ms. Hargraves clarified that the approval is only to allow the applicants to go to the planning board so they may proceed with site development plan review. Once the planning board grants approval, it is agreed and understood by the applicants in ARB that the applicants must return to the ARB for review under Section 96 and Section 97 of the Village Code, which are the standard review provisions. At such time, the ARB may continue its discussion with the applicants and their architect as to the design of the property and their application for a building apartment. Both of the ARB.
So how about this? How about this, that, I understand that we're usually about bulk and mass, things like that, that if it comes down to color and things like that or materials, the ARB is, is really, that's their, their realm. This is somewhere, I wouldn't agree, it's somewhere in the middle, but you've been back and forth, and I don't want to cause any more issues with it more than it is. I object to the way that you have masked this, okay? If the ARB, who, if they are the purveyor of this and they agree to what you're proposing, then I'll, I'll shut up. But I don't think it's, it's necessarily from a bulk perspective, the correct mass for Main Street. If this was somewhere else, I wouldn't be as, as stringent about it. But that's how I feel.
I disagree. I mean, we talked about it last time, so, what's my concern?
Well, I'd like to have the least chance to get back to the ARB. I mean, we can have a long discussion about the demolition law and how there was no coverage whatsoever to talk about its character on Main Street. Nothing in the law. And we got into that because we realized the only thing that they could do is to vote on the demolition. There were no controls whatsoever, no guidelines for the architectural resolution of an addition.
As I said, the guidelines are existing at the national level for a building that is a contributing element to a building that is, to a district or a building that's on the National Register.
Can I get a copy of that?
You can go online, go to the US Department of the Interior, they're all there.
You think the ARB has it?
I don't know. I don't know.
Okay.
But, but that's what, that's what they should be looking at. And as I said, as I look at it, again, from my, my background and having been involved with historic preservation properties, being involved with developing historic properties, what I see is, again, two things. The overhang just looks awkward and doesn't fit in. And when you look at the building from the front, a standing seam roof and, and windows that are so out of character with what the windows are and the fenestration is on the existing building, just don't fit in. I'm not asking you to replicate, but you, you have to do something that respects what the historic elements are of the, the existing building.
You realize, I apologize. You realize that was specifically comments from the, the ARB?
I don't know, it wasn't at the ARB meeting.
Well, they liked it. They liked veryish bigger windows.
They have my record and they have my voice on here, and they can go look at the Secretary of the Interior's standards also. And if they think that they are following that, then fine. I'm not, I'm not here, I'm the chairman of the planning board, not at the ARB.
Okay.
So we have a resolution. As the board want, let me, I'm sorry, let me open this up first to the public. Any comments from anyone in the public? No. But we have a resolution before us. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I didn't read it.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you want me, should I go ahead and read it?
Yes, please read it.
Okay.
Now somebody has it.
Whereas in September 2016, William and Regina Fitzgerald applied for site plan approval to construct a three-story addition to their house at 130 Main Street along with the deck and drainage structures, whereas the house is a contributing building in the historic overlay district and is located in the business district in the view preservation overlay district. The proposed improvements constituted demolition under the zoning code provisions for the historic district and therefore under Section 224-199 require approval from the ARB, whereas applicants appeared before the ARB and modified their plans in response to direction by the ARB, which on January 9th approved the demolition under 224-199 with the understanding that the application would still require planning board approval and would have to come back to the ARB for review under Sections 96 and 97 of the Village Code. Whereas Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in memoranda dated September 7th and January 31st listed a number of issues, most of which were addressed in a subsequent submission. Lucille Muntz, the village's landscape consultant, reviewed the plans and agreed that the two trees proposed to be removed be removed and recommended that they be stump ground below grade. The planning board held a public hearing on the application on September 7th, February 1st and March 1st, 2017. Planning board determined that the proposed improvements would not have a negative impact on the view of the Hudson River for neighboring properties. The actions of Type 2 action under SECRE therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Fitzgerald. Subject to, one, complying with the items listed in the Han memorandum dated February 28th, and two, in removing the trees, stump grinding them below grade.
Does the resolution do it? Do I have a...
Consequences of taking a vote? They want to vote on the resolution or they want to vote on, take, vote?
Well, we're voting on the site plan that's being presented tonight. If the board chooses not to, well, first of all, there's, there's a resolution before us. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
No.
Do I have a second? I don't have a second. At this point, Bob, I think you're hearing what the majority of this board is saying. They're not accepting what is on that site plan at this point. Any other comments before, George, you have any further comments?
No, I, I would not, if this is what, what we're, I'm not supporting this as is. And I'm all for trying to make it work, and like I said, if, even though I don't, I disagree that the ARB is the, the final decider on this thing, I think that there's ways that you can make your program work in, in a way that works, that is, it doesn't have, in my opinion, just to be clear, it doesn't have to be, it has to work as an architecturally addition to this. And I'll leave that as, as broad as you can, but to say to me that it's okay because this, this mistake that I have to do, it's being hidden by this other building, doesn't work.
No, no, no.
Doesn't work.
Could I suggest maybe, maybe you would want to ask, I don't know, occasionally on architecturally sensitive applications like this, you've asked the ARB for their input before you make their decision. And that way, he's asked to go before the ARB, maybe that would make some sense in this situation.
And it could also be for me, you, if you could explain it better through, and basically convince me that this is, works better than the way it's been presented so far, I'm all ears.
Okay. Can I make a suggestion? Could you at least approve it tonight, the site plan, subject to the ARB review?
Well, no, because the board just would not accept the resolution. They would not, they would not give a second, so we're not going to vote on it. What we will do is, my suggestion would be then, as we're, Marion is suggesting too, is we have the authority under the zoning ordinance to request a recommendation from the ARB in this matter. So what I would do then is, Mr. Rizzulo is here, I mean, it's, it'll be on the, the written record at this point, but I'd, I'd like to have the ARB then weigh in at this point and give their comments on the, the proposed site plan and return those to us before the next meeting, and then we'll take those into advisement and see what they have to say.
Okay.
Is that okay with the board members?
No.
Okay. And I'll leave that as, as broad as you can, but to say to me that it's okay because this, this mistake that I have to do, it's being hidden by this other building, doesn't work.
No, no, no.
Doesn't work.
Could I suggest maybe, maybe you would wanna ask, I don't know, occasionally on architecturally sensitive applications like this, you've asked the ARB for their input before you make their decision, and that way, he's asked to go before the ARB, maybe that would make some sense in this situation.
And it could also be for me, you, if you could explain it better through, and, and basically convince me that this is, works better than the way it's been presented so far, from all yours.
Okay. Can I make a suggestion? Could you at least approve it tonight, the site plan, subject to the ARB review?
Well, no, because the board just would not accept the resolution. They would not, they would not give a second, so we're not gonna vote on it. What we will do is, my suggestion would be, then, as Marion is suggesting too, is we have the authority under the zoning ordinance to request a recommendation from the ARB in this matter. So, what I would do then is, Mr. Rizzulo is here, I mean, it's, it'll be on the, the written record at this point, but I'd, I'd like to have the ARB then weigh in at this point and give their comments on the, the proposed site plan and return those to us before the next meeting, and then we'll take those into advisement and see what they have to say.
Okay.
Is that okay with the board members?
Okay.
Okay?
Get on the next, uh, ARB.
Very good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Uh, next item is 2016-36, Stephen Friend, 26 Maple Street, and under Q's on this matter.
Good evening, I'm Jonathan Maloney from Enziata and Maloney Design Consultants, representing the Friend residence at 26 Maple Street. Uh, we were adjourned from the February meeting due to some comments from Han Engineering that weren't addressed, that up since, since our last submission on, in, uh, February has addressed all of his comments, and we're requesting a referral to the ZBA for, you know, coverage, or, uh, we're covered at 39.6% due to an existing deck that's already built that we're legalizing, as well as a stair from the deck in the backyard. Um, from my understanding, that's, there's no other issues from Han Engineering. We would have to come back to planning after ours only has to was granted.
So, uh, you've addressed, oh, Han's Engineering.
Sheila Speaker, please.
Oh, sorry. You've addressed Han, the Han Engineering's, uh, comments? Okay. And, uh, George, I think...
Were the photographs done?
They're done.
The new ones that were, were asked about?
I saw all of them.
No, I know that we got them via email, and then there were comments about how this was done. Was any, nothing ever happened?
Yeah, we informed. That's, that was between you guys.
Can I just speak, I'm, I'm the neighbor across the street, and I, I just wanna make it known that we cannot see the deck, the deck has been there for years. The deck is totally behind the house, and we cannot see the deck, so there is really no issue for, for the view preservation for us.
So, can we then, in the, in the future, 'cause this always comes up, is to have some kind of guidelines, some kind of like diagrams that say, this is what you need to do to comply with this thing, so that it is not brought up each time?
You can, you can design a, uh, a requirement, and give it to them, handout.
It's weird, it's, it's...
Me and my big mouth. Thank you.
I agree with that, I agree with it. It wasn't addressed.
Oh, that's lovely. I'll leave now.
All right.
No, no, I don't care.
Anyone in the audience? Okay. I think that, uh, you're okay with us, and you can go for... Sheila, did you, you want a resolution?
A resolution on this one?
Don't have to come back at the zoning anymore, or you do a resolution?
It could be a root subject, too.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Are you with me?
No, absolutely.
But if you want, come back as well.
That's your, I should...
Sheila, you wanna read it? Can we get it, you wanna read it?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. In December 2016, Stephen and Michelle Friend applied for site development plan approval to construct stairs and legalize an existing deck on their house at 26 Maple, property is located in the view preservation overlay district. The improvements exceed the maximum coverage permitted, and the deck is located within the required rear yard requiring variances from the zoning board of appeals. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in memo dated December 6th and January 27th listed a number of issues with the site plan, all of which were addressed in a subsequent submission. Planning board held a public hearing on December 6th and March 1st. Proposed improvements would not impact the view of the Hudson River for neighboring properties. It's a type 2 action under SECR. Now, therefore be it resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Friend Residence, prepared by John and Enziata, uh, subject to receiving variances from the ZBA for coverage in the rear yard setback.
Okay. Go away. Thank you very much.
We do, we do the second and third motion.
You have to make a motion and vote on it.
Make a motion for the, uh, approval. Some more.
We do second.
Okay. Approved? Anyone else?
We're, we're, yeah, we all agree, and it's motioned, and one of those... Sure, thank you. Thank you very much. How's it going? I want, you need one?
No, no, I need one.
Oh, you need one?
Thanks.
Dwight, can I get one?
Yeah, just give that one.
All right, that's my company, thanks.
John Malone, Ferguson Malone Architecture, representing, uh, the Callahans. Um, we, uh, we made a, a slight revision to the plan, eliminating the pool equipment pad that was extended into the side door setback, and received variances for that this month. Um, there was a, a, uh, a zoning board had a requirement that we provide some additional screening. Um, we reviewed the species of that additional screening with Lucille Muns earlier this week, and sort of figured out which, uh, species we would be doing along that line, and she agreed to that, and I think, other than that, there was some engineering stuff that we picked up, that, um, I just, I don't get any questions, so...
Did any of the board members have any other comments on this?
We received additional screening, Justin.
Yes. So, the additional screening that they required was along the, uh, there's some tall evergreen screen here, some tall evergreen screen here, and they wanted us to connect that screening along inside the new exterior work as in this area. So, we, you know...
So, we have to revise the site plan to show the screening.
Yeah. And so, basically, what we specified is three different native species of, of evergreens that would block that line.
Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public on this matter? Now, Marion, do you have a resolution on this?
In December 2016, Chris and Sharon Callahan applied for site plan approval to construct a patio, relocate a driveway, demolish a deck and patio, and construct a pergola, hot tub and fire pit on their property at 23 Madison Park, property is located in the view preservation district. The improvements would require variances for coverage encroachment into the rear yard setback, and location of the pool nearer to the street line than the rear wall of the main building. Um, on February 21st, 2017, the zoning board of appeals granted the three variances on the condition that evergreens be planted and maintained inside the applicant's property line to screen the two neighboring properties from sight of the hot tub and fire pit. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memorandum dated January 3rd listed a number of issues which were addressed by unsatisfaction in a subsequent submission. The planning board held a public hearing on the application on January 4th and March 1st. Proposed improvements would not impact the view of the Hudson River for neighboring properties. Actions are type 2 under SECR. Resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Callahan Residence, prepared by Ferguson Malone Architecture, and the patio landscape plan prepared by Ambrosio Landscape Solutions, subject to submitting a plan showing the screening required by the ZBA, which must be approved by Lucille Muns, the village's landscape architect. That sounds like you part way on.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Some more.
Second?
Second.
Any further comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're approved. Uh, the next item is 2017-02, Marigus Barrow, 18 Park Avenue.
Good evening, um, my name is Sam Gator, I'm representing the owner of Marigus Barrow on, uh, project. Uh, we applied, I guess, last month, um, for, uh, to reconstruct the deck that was, uh, rotting, and found out that were, um, it's over coverage, um, 'cause the, I guess the original deck was smaller, and we also found, uh, that there's a, a walkway in the front that exceeds coverage, so, um, so what we're looking at, I guess we have to go to the ZBA for, uh, variance, um, to, you know, get this, uh, you know, legalized or approved.
Any comments from any of the board members on this matter? No? Any comments from anyone in the public? I think, I think they can go to the ZBA, I don't think, do we have a resolution on this?
I have a resolution, I have prepared one.
Okay.
It's busy, it's busy today.
It's a resolution.
In January 2017, Marigus Barrow applied for site plan approval to replace an existing deck on a house at 18 Park Avenue, and part of the deck was undocumented. The deck exceeds the maximum permitted coverage and therefore requires a variance from the zoning board of appeals. Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in a memo dated January 31st listed a number of issues, all of which were addressed in a subsequent submission. Planning board held a public hearing on the application on February 1st and March 1st. It's a type 2 action under SECR. Resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawing entitled Site Plan 18 Park Avenue, prepared by Designs and Engineered Solutions, subject to receiving a variance for coverage from the zoning board of appeals.
Any comments? No? You have a resolution? Sorry, can I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Some more.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're approved. All right, uh, you can take one and give the amendment to Marion, please, thank you. Next item is 2017-03, George Gomes, 156 West Clinton Avenue. Hillary Rochanelle is the Q's.
Hello, I'm Michael Lewis, the architect on the project. Uh, this is an extremely modest project where we're, uh, bumping up a small door on the existing roof, adding 62 square feet of, uh, space, uh, no increase whatsoever to the, uh, footprint or coverage of the building. Uh, you can see this little gray spot here, that's where we're, uh, adding the, uh, the dormer to the existing cable roof. These are, uh, these are photographs showing the existing, uh, views of the exterior, and also the before and, uh, after. The before and after, um, images were included in the package we submitted. The, these photographs showing the exterior views were. But in the before and after, uh, rendering, you can see that it's a, it's a modest dormer, uh, and from the, um, views from the exterior, you can see that, uh, well, I would think you'd be able to see that there's, it has no impact whatsoever on, uh, view of, of Hudson. There's, there's no view through that area. This shows what's happening. Basically, it's a very, it's a very small additional space. The, the existing master bedroom there is, uh, is of proportions that are just shy of what it really needs to be to function, so just by adding this small amount of square footage, it, it makes the space work much better. So, that's, that's the reason behind such a small addition. But just by bumping this up and getting the headroom you need there, it makes the, uh, makes the space much better. So, that's really all that's involved in it.
Any comments from any of the board members?
No.
No? Any comments from anyone in the public? No? Again, from the photographs, it's, it appears that there is no impact, uh, for the, the view preservation zone, and looking towards the Hudson River from the neighborhood to the east, so... Any comments, any further comments? No? Marion, do you have a resolution on this item?
Yep. Um, in February 2017, George Gomes applied for site plan approval to construct a shed dormer on this house at 156 West Clinton Avenue, property is located in the view preservation overlay district. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memo dated February 28th wrote that it had no engineering issues with the proposal. Planning board held a public hearing on March 1st. The proposed dormer would have no impact on views of the Hudson River for neighboring properties. It's a type 2 action under SECR. Resolved that the planning board grants the application for site plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled Modifications to 156 West Clinton Avenue, prepared by Michael Lewis, with no conditions.
Can I have a, uh, a motion to approve the resolution?
Some more.
To adopt the resolution?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I just have to say, not to, you know, this is the kind of, to me, this is the kind of application that really shouldn't come here. I mean, it is, it's as of right, right? It is, it has no impact, and quite frankly, we offered nothing to this, and there should be a way to somehow expedite it so that this client or people like this don't have to pay for all the, the parts. So, I, I hope that someone can work on that.
You know, I, uh...
And that's Chris isn't me, so, I mean...
I, you know, I'm, I was, uh, for a number of years, chair of the ARB in Hastings, and we had the same problem with view preservation there. It was even worse where it had to go to multiple agencies back and, more, boards back and forth. And, uh, finally, it, we recently changed it so that, uh, with the initial submittal, if there were no other, um, if there were no other issues besides view preservation, the building inspector could cite whether or not it needed to be looked at. I mean, in some cases, it just clearly doesn't, doesn't need the review, and so...
The only, and view preservation is just one element. The, the, the reason he's here isn't really for view preservation, it's for increase of FAR, and 62 feet isn't a lot, but at what point...
Yeah, so it's gotta come with a magic number.
It's just, it's just like doing the check sheet for your view preservation and your line. I'm gonna write it, and someone's not gonna like it. There's always gonna be a reason why I shouldn't have, or we shouldn't have, or they shouldn't have.
No, I think it's...
It's a very complex, it's not as, your answer is yes, and there was discretion on this one because it was in a view preservation district, it pushed right over the edge of discretion.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that it's, it's just something that should be looked at.
It's not as easy. What you said was elegant and correct, but it's not, it wasn't a yes or no question.
No, I'm just bringing up that perhaps there's a way to figure out through history and such, to come up with a, a limit of such that makes it so that people like this don't have to go through this.
And also, as the author of the amendment in Hastings, um, to the view preservation law, it isn't just the building inspector that decides. The building inspector has to be with the planning board chairperson and the zoning board chairperson to make sure that there's...
So, it still goes through a process.
Right, it's pre-review.
I mean, but, Hasting's original code said a generator pit had to go to view preservation.
Uh, anyhow, sorry to, uh, waste your time, but thank you very much.
The village is going through an update on the master plan, and one of the, uh, working groups is on, uh, code modernization. George, if you want to...
Thank you, thank you.
What are your suggestions?
I'll give you a new phone number to give.
George, I'm the chair of that group, so if you want...
Oh, thank you, I'm, it's been a lovely break.
Uh, next item is 2016-39, Linda Boff, 6 Palisser Road.
Steve Griggs from Griggs Designs here as well, representing the client. Um, I think with our last submission, we addressed, um, for the most part, Han's engineering comments, there's still a couple related to stormwater, which I'll discuss in just a couple minutes. Um, I think based on our meeting last month, we're getting closer and closer to the board being able to make a positive, um, recommendation to the ZBA for us for our coverage, uh, variance. Um, so what we prepared for you tonight was basically a comparison of last month's, um, layout, which was a reduction from the first layout, so this... So this is our kind of third try at it. And you can see in red is the outline of last month's patio. The blue is last month's pool. And as you can see, we incorporated comments from the board to try to kind of consolidate this a little bit closer to the house and also to reduce the amount of hardscape. So as you can see, the pool is actually reduced this time. We've been kind of focused on the patio in previous submissions, but this time we actually reduced the, the pool. You can see it's more narrow across and other dimensions as well have been reduced. You can see as well that the patio is much smaller than the previous patio and the whole pool and patio is brought closer to the house by about 17 feet. So it really kind of consolidates everything towards the house. We also incorporated other measures, again, to try to reduce the amount of coverage variance that would, we need. Again, this is an existing patio. We've actually made it smaller by moving in the retaining wall, the existing retaining wall that we're replacing is just a couple feet out here. We're also kind of cutting off some of the edges, things like that, to make the existing patio a little bit smaller. We've also. We've also taken their paved walkway through here and put stepping stones in here. Again, it's just to help to increase the percolation of stormwater, reduce runoff, that type of thing. It's not a, a large reduction, reduction in coverage, but we wanted to show good faith in, in making reductions where we could. The engineering comments are basically related to the stormwater. We've done deep tests in this area of the proposed infiltration area for the stormwater, but we haven't done the percolation test yet. The soils are very sandy, so we expect the percolation test to be very good. And there's also questions about this existing yard inlet that we believe is piped all the way out close to the street. And Han had some concern about that. I spoke with Doug yesterday about that. And what we're going to propose is see if we can try to improve that situation. So if we're lucky enough for the board to push this onto the ZBA for next month's ZBA meeting, before we come back here for final approval, we'd meet with Doug's office out in the field and see if we can do something to improve the existing drainage out, out on the property.
Well, Doug, can you, you just explain a little bit more about what is it that you're going to try and work out with him?
Well, right now, that, that catch basin collects water, who knows how much right now, but then it discharges right onto the roadway. And then infiltration testing was one of the things too, and it's, it doesn't seem worthwhile if they don't get approval for it. If they don't get a variance, then, you know, why do the testing now? It was kind of.
I see, okay. Ed, do you have comment?
I, I have one. I have. If they, if the proposal leaves that drain and it's discharging adversely onto public ways, I don't see how you can approve it. That's 22 here.
Okay. Any other comments around the board members?
Well, I personally, you know, think you did a great job trying to work this out. Almost to the point, and to be honest, when I looked at it, I was like, wow, okay, it's hugely different than what you came with.
Yeah, it was.
And my only question was, this is kind of odd, is you reduced the pool by 96 square feet. Is it still a pool? Meaning, is that, I, I think you did almost, this is me.
Be careful what you say.
I am, I'm being, I'm being very careful. What, what I'm trying to say is like, I think you did such a great job of haircutting this thing. The last thing I, I would want for this applicant is to be, have a pool that isn't a pool, if you know what I mean, just because someone up, you know, kept on saying, no, no, no. So the difference between your pool that you had previously and this pool is about 90, 96, I mean, I cared. I was like, I did the math, 96 square feet, which is in percentage of coverage is like 0.3%. So my question to you is, is that an appropriate pool? Or did you have the other pool? Is that?
Steve Griggs, thanks, George, for, we did a lot of work on this. The pool was actually almost too big for that family and I think we feel that this actually fits in the area a little bit better. The other one was like 25 feet wide, it was just too big.
Okay, so my biggest fear with this whole thing was that these four people who've gone through all this stuff and then they get like a bathtub at the end. But if you're saying not, then I'm going to.
No, he was actually like saying, you know what, now that I look at it, that pool was probably too big, so it feels good.
Then I don't feel so bad.
Thanks. You have to say, yeah, I think you did a very good job at making an effort to reduce the coverage and I liked your presentation, board, too. I think that was very effective. And I also, I would, you know, support what Doug is saying here, too. I would like to see, again, because you're going to be about 41%, still 41% over the permitted coverage. And again, just similar to that other project, the 200 River View, where they were 40% over. While that was something that was done in the past and we're still asking them to do some work to, to make up for having done work that wasn't appropriate, I think here too, you have a chance where maybe you can pick up some additional stormwater onsite and treat, and handle it onsite rather than have it go offsite. So if, if that's the way it's, you're going to be going with this, then I, I think I would be supportive of, of moving on to the ZBA.
Yeah, I think we're okay with, with looking at that with Doug's office.
Okay, Doug, you'll, you'll work with them to try and pick up some additional runoff beyond what they're required to do.
Yes. I eliminated this charge.
Onto the street.
And you come back for, and that's what we do with screening and stuff like that?
And your work, Lucille had comments?
Yes, there were comments.
Comments?
Did, um, did you get a copy of Lucille Muns' memo? Do we have a copy for her?
Last month, we had her comments.
Yes, but I think there were some additional comments. She made the comments that the properties around the back of this house are, are at higher elevations and they're going to be looking down into the yard, so possibly you want to do some additional evergreen screening. She's recommending additional evergreen screening around the back of the, the yard to, you know, to, both, for both the applicant and for the neighbors.
Yeah, there's one house that sits way up high and there's a bunch of 15-foot native rodent engine in there. We're going to stagger some evergreens up on the hill, so the.
Higher, the higher up on the hill we can plant them on the property line, it'll gain that much more height. Just, one of the comments is the azaleas are subject to heavy deer browsing and the miscanthus is now on the invasive species list. Both plant selections should be modified, so maybe you want to look at something else. If you want, you can even talk to Ms. Muns and see if she has some recommendations as to type of plants that, that would be appropriate. Sure, no problem. Okay? What are the, what are the, this is what you said. I didn't print it out, I just read it.
Oh, okay. As we indicated in our prior comments, a 20-inch maple tree located within no disturbance area and a 30-inch maple tree adjacent to the proposed construction entrance is shown as trees to be removed. The conditions of the two trees are not shown. It's not apparent why the 20-inch maple tree needs to be removed and it appears that the 30-inch maple tree could be spared by the relocation of the construction gate and protection of the tree from soil compaction and drainage from construction equipment. Additionally, a 14-inch tree species not indicated may be adversely impacted by the proposed construction. The species and condition of the tree and tree protection detail should be indicated on the drawings.
I think George, George just gave them a copy.
Here's another copy.
That's not on Lucille's.
So why don't you take both of those? I think those are things to look at in terms of coming back to this board after you go to the ZBA.
Sure, no problem.
Okay? I think that's it then. I think you can go off to the ZBA and then we'll see you with a revised site plan based on the comments from the landscape architect and the ECB, which are here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You guys need this? It's either there or you.
Have a motion to adjourn?
No more.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.